Okay. Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Stewart.
Here.
Trustee Monahan. Clerk Vorba, present. Trustee Dorchevitz. Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Item B is Pledge of Allegiance tonight, if we could be led by Judge Jeanette Berry. Wayne County Circuit Court, where did she go? There she is.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Judge. Next is item C. This is the swearing-in ceremony for the 2020-2024 Board of Trustees. How we're going to do this tonight is I will go first, followed by Clerk Vorba and Treasurer Clinton, and then we will swear in the trustees individually in order of alphabetical order, led by Trustee Kermy, then Dorchevitz, Monahan, and Stewart. So Judge Berry, if you would come forward, we can start the procedures.
Raise your right hand, please.
I, Kirk H. Heisey.
I, Kirk Heisey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Ordinances and policies.
Ordinances and policies.
Of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
Of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of supervisor.
I will faithfully perform the duties of supervisor.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
Being ever mindful.
Being ever mindful.
That my service is a reflection.
That my service is a reflection.
On the township of Plymouth.
On the township of Plymouth.
And I will.
And I will.
Discharge these duties.
Discharge these duties.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
How are you tonight?
I'm very good.
Congratulations. I know it was a hard-fought race. All right. I, Jerry W. Voor.
I, Jerry W. Voor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And policies of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
Policies of Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of clerk.
The duties of clerk.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
Being ever mindful.
Being ever mindful.
That my service.
That my service.
Is a reflection on the township of Plymouth.
Reflection on the township of Plymouth.
And I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
These duties.
These duties.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
How are you tonight?
Great, thank you.
Congratulations. All right. Raise your right hand. I, Mark J. Clinton.
I, Mark J. Clinton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And policies of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
And policies of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of treasurer.
The duties of treasurer.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
Being ever mindful.
Being ever mindful.
That my service.
That my service.
Is a reflection.
Is a reflection.
On the township of Plymouth.
On the township of Plymouth.
And I will discharge these duties.
And I will discharge these duties.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
How are you tonight?
Pretty fine, thank you.
Congratulations. All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Charles J. Kermy.
I, Charles J. Kermy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And policies of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
And policies of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of trustee.
I will faithfully perform the duties of trustee.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
Being ever mindful.
Being ever mindful.
That my service.
That my service.
Is a reflection.
Is a reflection.
On the township of Plymouth.
On the township of Plymouth.
And I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
These duties.
These duties.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
You should know that by now, right?
Yeah, I gotcha, yeah. How are you?
Hi, good.
Good. Congratulations. Raise your right hand. I, Bob Dorchevitz.
I, Bob Dorchevitz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And policies of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
And policies of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of trustee.
The duties of trustee.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
Being ever mindful.
Being ever mindful.
That my service.
That my service.
Is a reflection.
Is a reflection.
On the township of Plymouth.
On the township of Plymouth.
And I will discharge these duties.
And I will discharge these duties.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Do you see a resemblance here? Raise your right hand, please. Congratulations. Okay, that's right, that's right. Congratulations. I, Audrey R. Monahan.
I, Audrey R. Monahan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And the policies of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
And the policies of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of trustee.
The duties of trustee.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
Being ever mindful.
Being ever mindful.
That my service.
That my service.
Is a reflection.
Is a reflection.
On the township of Plymouth.
On the township of Plymouth.
And I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
These duties. According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me, God.
So help me, God. Congratulations.
You didn't hug me.
When this whole COVID is over. How are you tonight?
Good. Your honor.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, please, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I, John C. Stewart.
I, John C. Stewart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And policies.
And policies.
Of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
Of the Charter Township of Plymouth.
I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of trustee.
The duties of trustee.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
For the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan.
Being ever mindful.
Being ever mindful.
That my service.
Of my service.
Is a reflection.
Is a reflection.
On the township of Plymouth.
On the township.
Of Plymouth.
Of Plymouth.
I will discharge.
I will discharge.
These duties.
These duties.
According.
According.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
You're welcome. Thank you for being my honor.
Thank you very much, Judge.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Judge Berry, for that outstanding swearing-in ceremony. And we certainly like the family aspect to the whole thing. We are one big happy family here, and we welcome your sister to that club.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to you, her, and me, and everybody that helps support my sister. For both you, both of my father, our father, the light Joseph, your father, was constantly in the city of Minnesota for nearly 20 years. And I know he's looking down, shining his light on my sister's life. And I think so very much for you, and for all of the Michigan.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. Item D is the approval of the agenda. Comments or questions? Mr. Clerk?
Mrs. Supervisor, I move for the approval of the agenda for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Stewart. It's going to take me a while to get used to all that, but. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item E is Consent Agenda. We're trying to make better use of the Consent Agenda in the future, starting tonight. So we have on the Consent Agenda several items. Most of them are either appointments or reappointments. We also then have the trustee meeting schedule for next year, which is required by state law, a utility easement on North Territorial, and the water main easement for the Wabasto facility on Hagerty at Schoolcraft. With us tonight, we have Tim Boyd, who is a member of our Zoning Board of Appeals, who I'd certainly recommend your reapproval of him. He's done a terrific job for us. Donna Broderick is also here with us tonight for the Board of Review, her reappointment to the Board of Review.
Which one is she?
Pardon me?
Where is she?
Right over here. And then we also have Catherine Michelak. Is it Michelak? Mialik, okay, as the new alternate to the Board of Review. They're certainly available if you have questions, but I've assured them all that this is not like a Senate judiciary hearing where they're going to be grilled on all of their past indiscretions.
Before we leave that.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure that even the carryover people take the training for Board of Review.
Right.
Always good to know what to do, so you don't make any mistakes and do the best job we can.
Yeah, and there's always changes to the law as well, and I know that, I think, I don't know, Catherine, if you've spoken yet to Tracy in our assessor's office. If not, we will get you in touch with her, because there are training sessions that are required as part of your service on the Board of Review, and the law is always changing, especially with property taxes and the way assessments are made. It's a constantly moving process. So, yeah, we will definitely get you that training. Any other questions on the Consent Agenda? Any questions for Jeremy?
So this is a change.
Yeah.
Which I think I'm fine with, but what if we do have, we want to pull something out?
Right.
We would just pull it out if we want to discuss it?
What we're going to do in the month of January, our next meeting is going to be January 12th, and we're going to do our annual goal-setting meeting. One of the things that I'm going to submit to all of you, maybe as early as this week, certainly next week, is revised rules and protocol for the Board. And so we have different options. On the Consent Agenda, it's really up to the public body to set those rules. You can do, in many cases, it requires one person can take an item from the Consent Agenda and put it onto the full agenda. In some cases, it requires two people. I mean, we really can set that.
Okay.
So it's really up to me to set the Consent Agenda in such a way that I'm putting things on there that I hope are not controversial and either administrative or pro forma stuff like easements, so that we're not teeing them up one after the other and voting on them like we've been doing. And as you can see, even in tonight's agenda, the dump truck, the hazard mitigation plan, you know, those are all items where I expect that there could be some questions or a little bit more detail. So those would always be on the regular agenda. But we ultimately can decide how we want to move items from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda.
Okay.
And we'll hopefully adopt those rules. I'd like to adopt those rules at the end of January.
Okay.
Okay. So Jerry, do you think we should do a roll call on the Consent Agenda?
Just the same, same as the agenda.
Same as the regular, okay. Any other questions on the Consent Agenda? Very well. Then I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Supervisor, I move for the approval of the Consent Agenda for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Monahan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. E3 is Acceptance of Communications Resolutions and Reports. We did not originally plan on anything tonight, but we have received the annual report from Huron Valley Ambulance. This is part of our agreement with them, and they just submitted this last week, and I thought it would be timely to get this in front of you now, rather than wait another month and introduce it in January. Chief Phillips has reviewed this, and I don't think you have any significant problems. So that.
When does the contract expire?
Well, it was a two-year contract, so I think it expires at the end of next year, '21. Yeah. So we really don't. Yeah. Okay, so we've accepted that under E3 already. Okay. Okay, yeah.
So do they have any, do they have a plan for how they're going to address their deficit? Because I'm sure it's impacting them all over their service area.
Chief, I don't know if you can comment on that.
If they do have a plan, they haven't shared it with me at this point.
Okay.
But they have picked up additional duties with coronavirus, you know, different things that they could do with different hospital systems.
Is raising the fees an option?
I'm certain that that's, they're probably going to raise their fees whether it was coronavirus or not. That's just standard practice. But as you recall, they cannot raise them above a certain threshold without our approval.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item F is Public Comment. Limited to three minutes. This is not your only opportunity during the meeting. We also encourage comment on individual agenda items as they come up, as long as they are germane to that particular topic. So anybody at this point would like to comment? Okay. Item G1 is Purchase of a New Dump Truck. Director Felra.
Dang, this is some exciting stuff.
Good evening. So before you tonight is the request to purchase a single-axle dump truck for the Department of Public Works. This item was budgeted for the current fiscal year 2020. Foreman, Service Technician Senior, and myself have met with vendor and discussed this purchase with both of them. The chassis portion of the truck is proposed to be purchased from Wolverine Freightliner, and the dump body and the associated equipment is proposed to be purchased from Truck and Trailer Specialties. And both these vendors are part of a municipal cooperative agreement. They went through the Mitten system, and the lead agency was the City of Rochester Hills. So the pricing that they provided was based on that agreement, which was awarded in September of this year. Having said that, if you have any questions in regard to the truck or any of the specifications, Wolverine Freightliner is an American company. They've been around for 70-some-odd years. They do control the municipal market in this area. And Truck and Trailer Specialties are, they opened a new facility in Howell, Michigan, and they're very popular in providing dump bodies, truck equipment, snow equipment to various, to all the municipalities around here, the City of Plymouth, Livonia, Washtenaw County, Great Lakes Water Authority, Canton Township. So these are two well-known, established, reputable vendors that provide this type of equipment. And this is in part to take, you know, to replace, more or less, our old dump truck that is the 1995 model year. And as discussed in previous meetings, it's old and weak. And this is surely needed for the Public Works Department.
And I've been denying this purchase now for about three years running, so I finally relented in this budget.
Well, you're not the only one.
We appreciate your patience, so this really is time to purchase this new item. Any other questions?
No, I have several.
Okay.
Does it fit in our garage facilities? So you have it out of the weather?
Yes, yes. This will be stored in-house in our facility. It's a six-cubic-yard truck.
All right, so it can get through the door.
It's similar in size to our current large dump truck.
Will there be required special training for drivers? Because it's an expensive piece of new equipment.
Correct. Yes, training I know is offered as part of this cooperative agreement. So that's something we'll follow up on. Our staff is, of course, they do have the appropriate license to drive these trucks. But training is provided by Wolverine as part of the cooperative agreement.
Encourage them to take it.
Yes.
It said the delivery is 10 months. Is that true?
Yeah, unfortunately, it is true. It's going to be, that was the timeframe given to us.
All right, and why do you think?
Covid-related, so.
Why do you think you're receiving the best price for the specification you asked for?
The cooperative agreement that was had by the City of Rochester Hills, that actually, that was a team effort. Who was involved in the request for proposals and the review and the recommendation were several communities. The City of Auburn Hills, Farmington Hills, Livonia, Madison Heights, Troy, and Bloomfield Township. And they got together with the sole purpose of seeking the best value/quality of a variety of chassis, single tandem axle trucks, and they did go through the Mitten system. So all that due diligence was performed by all those communities through the Mitten system. So I'm pretty confident we got the best value.
Okay, anything else? Yes. Trustee Monahan.
Mr. Felra, just for the application of our viewers and our people here in the audience, can you tell us what the dump truck is going to be used for? We certainly had it in our notes. Why would we get to purchase a new one?
Yes, absolutely. This is the truck that will be used mainly to do any type of excavation work by the DPW, the Department of Public Works. So anytime we do a water main break or a water main repair, or anytime we're hauling, excavating with our backhoe soil, we will use this dump truck. This is the, it's a diesel, and it's going to be the workhorse to do that type of work. We have a smaller dump truck, but that is more of a landscape type. This is what's going to carry the heavy load, the wet soil that you would encounter during a main break or repair. So that's basically what we will be using it for, any type of excavation by the Department.
Are you going to retain the old one for other uses?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to hold that as long as we can, because we do feel that we need two dump trucks. So it would be, yes, we would definitely keep using that, and it will increase our efficiency when we do have the main break. We have two trucks active at this same time.
How many miles on that?
On the old one?
On the current one? Is it really measured by miles or by years?
Probably hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Okay.
I can tell you offhand, as I stated before, it's a gas-powered manual shift dump truck.
Okay.
It's not very powerful.
We've learned a lot about buying fire engines in the last few years, and I've learned that it's not the miles, it's the years. Kind of like with people, you know? Okay. Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to approve the purchase of one single-axle dump truck for $127,120 per the attached pricing information from Wolverine Freightliner Eastside, Inc., and Truck and Trailer Specialty, Inc.
Second.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba, seconded by Trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Treasurer Clinton, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Monahan. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, item G2 is Approval of the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Chief Phillips, you can address that from the table.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to read the introduction to the 352-page document. I believe the introduction will give you a good idea of what exactly this plan entails. Wayne County is subject to natural, technological, and human hazards that can threaten life, health, property, and the environment. The Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires local governments to develop a hazardous mitigation plan, which identifies strategies to minimize the impact of these hazards in order to be eligible for pre- or post-disaster mitigation funding. In response, Wayne County has prepared this multi-jurisdictional hazardous mitigation plan to better understand significant Wayne County hazards and their impacts, and to identify ways to mitigate those hazards. And then it just goes on to say that we've been working on this plan for the past two years with all of the Wayne County communities, with the exception of Detroit, that has their own emergency management division. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Aren't there some other cities that have their own? I mean, I know Dearborn, Livonia.
They do, but Dearborn, Livonia, us, we all join in with Wayne County to create the stuff. We are a subdivision of Western Wayne County Emergency Management.
Okay, so this plan is generally being adopted by all of our neighboring communities?
Yeah, all 42 communities in Wayne County, with the exception of the City of Detroit.
Right.
We'll be adopting this.
Okay, so this puts us all in the same plane in terms of what we identify as hazards in the county. I worked on these things many times in the past, so I think the big thing about it is it helps to streamline the process, so rather than having 42 separate plans, we have one plan that when we submit it to FEMA, or when we try to get money, really, this is more about directing money in the event of a disaster. That way, we can just say, here's our plan for all the communities, and we can check that box off really easy.
Yeah, this plan was submitted to FEMA in 2019 and approved. Now we have to adopt it. They've agreed with our plan.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for the chief?
What does the acronym TCU mean?
TCU.
It's in the third page, I think.
The third page of the document?
No, of our.
Of our, or of our support emergency operating.
It's on page 145 of the document, page 106 of the, six of the packet, middle of the page.
106.
TCU, oh, the TCU.
Texas. Single-family housing constitutes, TCU.
Single-family housing constitutes 37.1%.
Something.
And TCU makes up another 18.3% of the town.
Right. Since we don't know what it is, just send me an email, tell me what it is tomorrow, please.
That's from.
I'm guessing it's technical, commercial, or some.
Technical, commercial use.
But I'm not going to, I don't guess.
It's from our planning document. It's from our planning document, so I'll go double-check.
Jeremy, you wanna take a shot at that? Have you ever seen that?
TCU.
TCU. Technical commercial units?
Utilities.
Oh, wow. Okay. We'll figure it out.
Everybody's just guessing.
Because we do have quite a few utilities, uh, natural gas compression operations.
Yeah, like the Buckeye Pipeline and.
Right.
There's some other local pipelines through here.
I'm guessing, but we don't wanna do that.
Okay. Well, that'll be our, that'll be our secret question for tomorrow. Any other questions for anybody on the board or the public? Then I need a motion on this.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to approve Resolution 2020-12 dash 08 dash 110, approving the adoption of the 2020 Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan specifically. One, the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan or sections of the plan specific to affected communities are hereby adopted as an official plan of Plymouth Township. Two, the emergency management coordinator is charged with supervising the implementation of the plan's recommendations as they pertain to Plymouth Township and within the funding limitations as provided by the township, Plymouth Township Board of Trustees or other sources. Three, the emergency management coordinator shall give priority attention to the following actions recommended in portion to the plan specific to Plymouth Township. A, large storms, power outages, see page 40, 145. B, tornadoes, see page 45. Hazardous materials incidents, I-275, M-14, CSX, again noted on page 145.
Very good. Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dorchevitz. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Stewart. Trustee Monahan.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to item G3, I've been informed by our township attorney that MCL 42.27 requires a roll call vote for a resolution. And since there were resolutions in the consent agenda, we need to revisit that, and we will have to approve the consent agenda by a roll call vote. So I would, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Uh, motion's made by Clerk Vorba, seconded by Trustee Monahan, by Monahan. So, Mr. Clerk, just take the roll when you are ready.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Monahan.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, this, since we're on MERS, is there any feedback from employees? We made the decision about a year ago. The money was transferred at a market high, which made a little consternation there in March. Any feedback? Because it was a difficult decision.
I, I have not heard anything personally from, from employees. I, I think the firefighters are, are happy with it. They were the ones who were really pushing it. Police is, our fire, police and fire.
I've noticed that the fees are considerably less.
Yeah. I mean, I like it. It's, I mean, I'm on that plan, and it's been doing very well this year despite the setbacks. So, moving on to item G3, this is the MERS Plan Update. So I, I just wanna explain again that what we're voting on tonight is, is clarification documents that have been requested by MERS. We are not changing the plan. We're not amending it in any way. All we're doing is we are showing them what our current practices and procedures and policies are in our collective bargaining agreements and also in our non-union policies and procedures. I, I serve on another board, as you know, the Metro Parks Board, and we've, we had to do the same update with MERS for that body as well. So this is just something that they're asking of all of their clients. And if you scroll further down into that memo, you'll see that I explain each one of them in, in pretty decent detail. This has also been reviewed by Laura Ketcher, who is our, our HR consultant, and by, by the MERS administrators in Lansing. So again, there is, nothing's changing by doing this. We are simply providing them with more detail on how we determine and answer these questions, such as the definition of wages, eligibility, leaves of absence, and things like that. So if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2020-12 dash 08 dash 111, authorizing the approval and implementation of all plan adopted agreements, addenda for the township defined benefit and defined contribution plans as requested by MERS, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign all required implementation documents.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Monahan. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Monahan. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item G4 is the 2020 Budget Amendments involving General Fund and the Clerk's Office. Mr. Clerk, you wanna?
Mr. Supervisor, thank you very much. As you recall, we had budget discussions last year for the Clerk's Department, specifically the elections. And of course, we had a, a long discussion about how much these elections were gonna cost concerning the changes with 18-3, proposal 18-3, and then, of course, the complications of COVID. And, and as you recall, that it was about a 40% increase over any previous election cycle in the, in the past. And during that, those conversations, at the, the last meeting we had, the, there was a motion by a trustee to reduce the, the budget by $25,000 that passed. I'm coming back to you now for the $18,500 to put back into the, to the budget in order to, to balance everything and to specifically pay for the Dominion election equipment adjudicator. And so.
Oh, no.
The adjudicator was instrumental in us processing the ballots, the absentee ballots, in a very timely fashion. Without that, we would've been here for hours and hours more. And so I would thank your approval of this motion.
So, so what does that machine actually do, Eric?
Thank you very much. Very good. It adjudicates.
It better stop.
What the, what is it? It's software. But there is some hardware with it, just screen and of course connections. And this is connected to the high-speed equipment. So you have a station where you have a screen, and the software allows the high-speed equipment to continuously run. Without that, if there was a problem with the ballot, you had to stop, pull that ballot out, and then rerun the batch again, and then solve the problem manually with that ballot. With the adjudication, uh, 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 process, it doesn't stop. But that issue shows up on the screen of the, of the monitor. And you have a Republican and a Democrat monitoring that, and then they together adjudicate it on the screen as opposed to stopping the machine and doing it by hand process. And the only time it would change was if there was a disagreement on, on that, on what the ballot said, if it had to be duplicated in some fashion. So what it does, it's, it allows the machine to continue to run continuously, and then captures a picture of that ballot front and back, and allows a Democrat, Republican to solve any issue that is caught by the tagline.
Were there any cases in which, where the, the two could not agree on an exception?
No. And it doesn't mean that sometimes where there was, you couldn't solve the problem, that there wasn't a duplication of a ballot. And of course, you know that all the military ballots have to be duplicated, because they come in, we, we email them to the, to them, they put it off on their printers, and then mail them to us, and then we have to then therefore transfer those ballots to a real ballot and then run it through. So it sped up the process incredibly. Just about every jurisdiction with any number of voters, such as ours, have gone to buying the hardware, the hardware and software.
So this is the infamous Dominion Company, correct?
Pardon?
Dominion is the company that we're doing this amendment for?
Yes, because we're using their equipment and their software, and this is more of their software and equipment that assists in running the absentee ballots.
And, and who recommended the Dominion system to Plymouth Township?
Uh, this was done by the county clerks. In, in the state law, county clerks are the ones who decide what type of voting equipment is going to be used. And Wayne County selected Dominion. So everyone in Wayne County uses Dominion. As a matter of fact, 63 of the 83 counties in the state of Michigan use Dominion software and hardware.
Jerry, what if, all of us know that there's been an issue, okay? This is the big elephant in the room, right? So what confidence does any of us have by giving you an extra $18,500 that this system's going to be any more credible than it was before?
Uh, this is brand-new equipment, and it worked sterlingly. As a matter of fact, when, when we were finished with our running of all of our equipment, we balanced right to the T. One of the few communities that were able to do that.
Jerry, I remember when we were debating this last year during the budget process, and you painted a worst-case scenario for people, for money, for equipment, because of what this, you know, anytime absentee ballot voting was going to do. And I'll admit it, I thought it was overkill. And your worst-case scenario doubled the worst case with this COVID. So thank you for your persistence, because you, we ended up investing in terms of people, equipment, and, and money exactly as we had to. And you made our community look very good as part of the process. So I'm grateful for, for your persistence in making sure we did this right. And thank you, and thank you for the support.
You know, I wanna echo that, because I was thinking about that. I was, I also pushed back on you. And then after the election, I thought, that is probably one of, if not the most important thing that we do on this board, is to make sure we get our elections right. And you were, you were right. It was, you know, a little bit of extra money, a little bit of extra staff, and we had a flawless election, and I commend you for that. So I echo Mark's comments.
Thank you very much.
Is there gonna be any money reimbursed from the state for this huge overruns throughout the state?
You can always be hopeful, but of course, the state is in its own little financial mess. We've made requests through our legislators that, hey, we need more help. We spent more money on mailing. We spent more money on personnel. We spent more money on equipment. And it was a, a real burden on everybody. And, and so we've asked for, for, for more assistance. We'll, we'll see. But we, the state did come through earlier in the year and supplied us with the money that we spent extra on the presidential primary. So they did come forward a little bit. We did get some money for PPE. We did get a grant for some PPE and for some, uh, 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 labor costs. And so that, that was helpful in, in the mix. But of course, all, all gifts are graciously accepted.
Okay. Any questions on, from the public on this item? Very good. Then I am looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
You wanna do your own motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I move that the Plymouth Township Board of Trustees hereby adopt Resolution 2020-12 dash 08 dash 112, authorizing the Finance Director to appropriate fund balance, amending the 2020 General Fund Capital Equipment Expenditure Account in the amount of $18,500.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Monahan.
Yes.
Trustee Stewart.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item G5 is an extension of the DPW surplus land purchase agreement. This has been with us now for a couple of years. And the memo pretty much explains the timeline that we've been dealing with. Our last extension was granted on July 28th, and it's set to expire at the end of this month. We, you may remember that we chose the end of December in order to allow the new board members to weigh in on this issue. We had, I think we had, we had also discussed about maybe a, a year-long agreement, but we didn't wanna, we didn't necessarily want to handcuff the new incoming board with a, a purchase agreement that they did not understand or agree to. So we, as I recall, we specifically chose December 31st. Unfortunately, due to the COVID crisis and the ongoing negotiations with Wayne County, the, the Phoenix Management Holdings, which is represented here tonight by Leo Gonzalez, has yet to complete the, the due diligence. Although tonight, I know Leo does have some good news for us, that he has been able to secure a, a piece of land from Wayne County that was critical for him to move forward on this. So I'm gonna recommend that we extend this agreement again to June 30th, another six months roughly. And Leo, if you could come forward and just give us an update on the project, and tell us about this recent development with Wayne County, which was actually agreed to after I had drafted this cover memo.
Leo Gonzalez, behalf of Phoenix Holdings, I'll see members of the board. Now, I am pleased to announce that after several months of negotiating with Wayne County, we have prevailed in convincing them to sell a parcel that's approximately 80 acres. A little background on this, on this, we think dating back in the early 1990s of this project, that when the park was completed, or at least that section of the park, there was this parcel that was left, though this parcel being adjacent to the DPW's piece. When we first had a call this a year and a half ago or greater, you know, we tried to do without the parcel and, and direct the future access of the potential ingress, segress for the respective buildings through the DPW's main entrance.
Where's that?
Yeah, we're bringing it up right now.
Yeah.
Well, let's get, let's put this on, on satellite.
Uh, yeah, I'm trying to remember exactly where this is. Is it further down?
It's just east of.
Here it is.
Back road.
Here it is.
Who, who can't hear us? You can't hear me? Okay. All right. So that's the DPW. I don't have my, I don't have my pointer with me tonight, but.
Hang on a second, Leo. Jeremy's got a better illustration.
And Leo, if you could hold the microphone as close to your mouth as possible, because they're having a hard time hearing you on TV.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. That shows the parcel, yeah.
Thanks.
It's kind of a weird easement, because this, this goes back to the, the first phase of the industrial park versus the second phase. So that white line that basically bisects this photo, everything to the, to the left is the new part. Everything to the right of that line is the old part. And it's my understanding, and maybe some of you know this or, or remember this, but Port Street, where it curves, I believe it dead-ended at that middle white line at some point. It dead-ended. And this land was considered kind of a no-man's-land surplus area that was ultimately given, gifted to the township by DeMardea at that time. And we, we developed that site using, we, the township back in the early 1990s created, or late 80s, early 90s, created a, a building fund to, to pay for that building and for Fire Station 3. So to the best of my knowledge, this odd-shaped property was kind of a, an afterthought.
was kind of an afterthought easement that was part of the road that was either under the control of Wayne County or was provided to Wayne County as some kind of future access or future road easement. But, long story short, that property has been owned by the county. I think they offered a hundred thousand dollars for it, and I think you agreed to, what, twenty?
They originally came back at a hundred fifteen thousand.
Holy cow.
We originally offered twenty-five, and they agreed to settle on twenty-five. What seemed to be the, one of the biggest, the appraisal came back, and I reminded them that the appraisal, probably didn't take into account that piece on itself, was not built, really no purpose anybody to be adjacent to. Well, there are a couple of people in the county that see, you know, what we've laid out, and they finally moved back to the respective departments. And I think this was held by the DPW of Wayne County, who was probably part of the roads.
Roads.
They finally gave up and said, hey, yeah, we see where you're coming from. Certainly demonstrated to them that, you know, the benefit of this being assembled with the other parcels and being able to build these buildings was far greater than the excess of extra money that they were trying to ask for. It really took care of a lot of problems. We were having a hard time being able to get truck traffic through the middle Port Street you see on your site plan. It was going to be very difficult to get truck traffic coming in that middle entrance and then go west and make the radiuses. And it probably will limit the amount that we should secure for this building, because it was probably more of a warehouse and distribution, I'll call it, uh, forum. Now with the dedicated drive, we're positioned to get a, maybe a flash or an RDB building. Hopefully, the market supports it. So, and it also gives us better parking. And it also gives us a, uh, alleviates the problems that we're going to have with your customers coming and going to the DPW. Now, mind, you don't have customers going to DPW that often, but you do have trucks that come and go all the time, you have employees that come and go.
Okay, so what's the status now of that? You have a deal? Have you consummated that deal?
So, they agreed, this week they agreed to draft a purchase agreement. They said, fine, put together an agreement, it'll be submitted to us, going back to the county, to get approval from them for drain permission, because they are going to make us incorporate an airway, see where they're coming out. So whatever stormwater that's accumulated by that parcel, they're going to, as I said, they're going to make a plan in our calculations. They understand we're going to have to go to the county, drain, county road, to get approved for this. And they recognize that we also have to go to Township Planning Commission and Board for approval.
Oh, yeah.
In addition, we're going to have to go to Eagle on this, because this curb cut, this one of the access drives, it's not shown on this one, but we have another access drive that's going to come across a wetland area there. We're going to have to get permission from Eagle to do that. I'm not so sure that we won't have to go to Eagle anyways, because of our stormwater. At some point, we're going to be draining the water up into the wetlands there. But, and we're going to be extending some utilities, which will be Eagle permitted as well.
So Jeremy, what have you put on the screen here?
That's the wetland information that's present on Eagle's website.
Okay. Are you using our new GIS map, too?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
So what is the more yellow-looking depiction?
The lighter yellow. What's the lighter yellow?
So this is soils that have the potential to be wetland. This is just maps that the Eagles compiled over the years. It doesn't mean that there necessarily is guarantee of wetland, but there are wetland soils present.
So Leo, what is your next step? Assuming that we give this approval tonight, what are you looking to do next?
We'll go down there for Wayne County in the next thirty days, last. But now, I can start the finishing of the engineering with this access point. We'll submit to Wayne County again. Wayne County already ran a mission. And before I wanted to come into the planning department or into engineering, I wanted to kind of get a sense from the planning or from Wayne County Drain, what their expectation for the stormwater was, and see if they could flush out some of the items that would make it part of the plan. The goal is to give some plans to them probably in the next thirty, forty-five days, submit a set to the planning department, you know, engineering, and then start to work towards approval.
Mr. Gonzalez, do you think that June thirtieth is enough time for you?
I think we could very well be on the June thirtieth, but I'm probably going to invest in the time to this to get it to a point where I can come back to the board in the next five to six months and say, here's the meetings that we've had thus far. We've been the planning commission, we've got Wayne County. You know, Wayne County's an uncertainty, depending upon how much, well, I already know that they're back on a lot of projects that they have to get out, that much more ahead of our respect. So they're going to prioritize those. It could be in Wayne County for a number of months. There is some uncertainty and timing of what those agencies can process. Eagle's another one. Eagle, you know, Eagle's behind, because all these agencies have certain priority items. And although this will get taken a look at, there's other projects that are in front of us. But my goal is to have enough, enough of those, at least some feedback to those respective departments and agencies, be able to come back and say, here's what we've accomplished in the last six months with this parcel. Here's our next step. And hopefully, you know, have a board, if by some outside chance we make a lot of progress in the next six months, then my update will be even better.
Thank you.
You know, historically, I dislike the idea of bringing him back every six months, because it gives us a chance to find out where he is. And, you know, since we do have a stake in the outcome, I think it's important for us to keep an eye on you, make sure that you're doing your due diligence, and also so that we learn what hazards you may be facing that we may intervene on behalf of you and the county or the state. Because we've had to do that recently. The county is very far behind in issuing stormwater permits and road permits, ingress egress-type things. And we've been in touch with the county just this week with a list of projects, like Henry Ford Hospital, like Cadillac, and some others here that are robusto, that have not been moving, because the county is not, because of COVID, they have just not had the personnel working on these projects.
Well, they're slowing economic recovery. Can they contract out the private companies to get them through the bulge? Instead of just doing what they're doing, you know they're going to keep getting what they're getting, which is farther and farther behind.
If Wayne County, Wayne County Drain and Road, I've never seen them do their part.
Well, this is America, we fix things.
When I was a Drain Commissioner, I used third parties on things. We got stuff done, so. But anyway, I do recommend the six months so that we can have these kinds of discussions and check up on your progress.
So, refresh my memory, how, let's go back to just step one. How did we come to that agreement? Was there a competitive bid? Was this put out for bid?
It was put out for bid, well, back in twenty...
Eighteen.
Twenty-eighteen. We approved the purchase agreement in December of twenty-eighteen. I believe it was a two-year deal at that point. And then we've just been renewing it in six-year increments ever since.
Six months?
Six months, sorry.
Well, I don't think we actually received any bids, other than from Leo, right?
I don't know if you were the only bidder or not. I know we posted, you know, we took it to the board, the board authorized it. We published it, it went out there. We've had the property appraised earlier, because we were, very early on, we were looking at what it would cost for us to sell the entire property and move the DPW. But that was just not in the cards. We didn't have the funding, and we really didn't have a suitable backup facility. But the board authorized it, we published it. It was, Leo was the, I think you were the only one, maybe.
Leo, to make the job a little more manageable for you and us, I'd like to see you make, in just a spreadsheet format, the open issues and the status. And you could get that to us. What is the item? What's happened? Is it opened or closed? You know, the date it closed, or whatever? It'll help us, without us having to ask questions, you can just send that to Kirk or whatever, and it'll have the twenty-five items or whatever's on there. And then, because, versus a narrative? A narrative is not efficient to go through open issues. I know lawyers like narrative, but engineers, and you're dealing with a lot of engineers, like spreadsheets with open issues that are succinct, that they can go through each one at a glance.
I like both.
Be careful, Chuck, you got five lawyers on this board now.
Five to two.
Five to two. Our numbers went up.
What a laugh.
Yeah, well, I'm sure you can do that. And I'm sure, I assume you're working with a civil engineer of some sort, so you can have them prepare that. They're going to have, they're going to need that anyway. Okay. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Gonzalez? Anybody in the audience? Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk?
I move that the Township Board approve Resolution 2020-12, that's 08-113, authorizing Township Supervisor Kirk to sign the Real Estate Purchase Agreement Amendment to the Phoenix Management Holdings LLC four, for surplus township parcel located at Fort Six, five-five Port Street.
Motion's made by Clerk Vorva, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Monahan. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Monahan? Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Stewart?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you.
You too, Leo.
Item six is 2020 City of Plymouth Grant Funding Reimbursement. Finance Director Ginger Moriarty will explain this one for us.
Good evening, Board Members. So for those of you that are new, I'll just give a little recap. I apologize that this isn't part of the consent agenda, it's part of the normal check requests. Earlier this year, we made an application for a public safety grant in which we received an award from the state of Michigan. As it indicates in the packet, we received the award in September, and we received a partial grant, award, that the board both recognized the revenue that was received from the state and also appropriated a portion of that funding that belongs to the city of Plymouth for a consolidated dispatch service. So in nineteen ninety-nine, the township and the city of Plymouth entered into a consolidated dispatch agreement. The city of Plymouth then pays for a cost share or their portion of the dispatch operation, and they pay for that on a month-to-month basis. The cost of the dispatch operation includes not only the salaries and wages, but the other costs for the entire operations of the dispatch, and actually our jail services or corrections. As part of the grant application for the public safety officers, it included our firefighters, our police officers, and our dispatchers. In the grant that we received in September, we received a partial award of five hundred ninety-four thousand that we recognized. Of that portion of the grant that we received, ninety thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars of that was the portion that was reimbursed for the dispatch for the month of April. Historically, the township charges the city for their portion of the cost share. And historically, that has been approximately thirty percent of the total operation. We do an annual calculation post-audit to true-up any differences between the amount that the city pays to the township on a monthly basis, based on the total operation at the end of the year. There's a calculation that's based on the population of the city versus the township. The calculation is based on the property values, the construction, as well as a total cost that they pay for the use of our capital assets. So the assets we own as a township, we purchase, but then the city then pays for the use of those assets. As this is grant funding as part of the CARES Act from the federal government, it's considered a pass-through grant. And when the application was made, we had to indicate that we were in a consolidated service situation, and a portion of the operation was paid for by another municipality. So as part of the intergovernmental service, that expense that was reimbursed belongs to the city of Plymouth. We were told, when we received the original disbursement in September, which was supposed to be for the entire award, that we would receive the remaining portion of that award mid-October. We delayed the recognition of the grant revenue and the appropriation of that, hoping for the award in October, which it never came. We are still today waiting for the state to make a final decision on any additional grant awards that we may receive as part of this for the remaining part of the payroll for the month of May that was submitted to the state. At this time, because we are coming to a close for 2020, and after speaking with an auditor, that money that we received as part of the grant funding needs to be reported on the city of Plymouth's financial report as their grant funding, and we need to make a check payment. So regardless of whether the city may or may not end up owing the township money at the close of the year after we do our true-up, which won't occur until after we complete our audit process, which won't be until June of 2021, that funding must go to the city. And then, based on the true-up and the total operational cost of the dispatch, we will then bill back if needed at that time. So, because we had completed the entire check request and completed the consolidated report for all of those checks, we did a separate memo in order to make sure that before the end of this fiscal year, we were able to complete a check run process and to get those grant funds that we received that belonged to the city dispersed to them before fiscal year end. So this is the motion that you're reviewing this evening.
Okay, any questions? Comments?
I want, thanks. So, if there is anything owed back, does we get interest on this?
Our...
True-up, if the city owes the township money, do we get interest back?
It's based on our consolidated service agreement, and the service agreement doesn't have interest calculated as part of the true-up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none? Anybody in the public? Hearing none? I'll entertain a motion on this item?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk?
I move that the Plymouth Charter Township hereby approve Resolution 2020-12, that's 08, that's 114, to authorize the disbursement of the city's portion of federal grant pass-through dollars received for dispatch payroll reimbursement owed to the city of Plymouth based on their historical cost share of thirty percent in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-eight cents City of Plymouth, PSTHPR, grant share expenditure account received by Plymouth Township from the state of Michigan in 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion's made by Clerk Vorva, seconded by Trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Monahan? Trustee Stewart?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Item H is public comment. Anybody in the public wishes to speak? Okay, I'm going to move on to board comments. So I want to welcome again our new board members, our new trustees, John Stewart and Audrey Monahan. I know that you guys will do a great job, and you come to the table with a great deal of experience in both the public and private sector, and especially in the law, which we like to remind Mr. Kermy of from time to time. I hope he's smiling under there. And so we certainly are looking forward to working with both of you. At this time, as far as public comments go, I just want to mention that we will not be meeting again for the rest of the year, for the month of December. There will be no study session on January fifth, and our next regular meeting will be January twelfth. At that meeting, I'm trying to keep the agenda pretty light. We'll have our annual goals review, and I will provide you with my personal list sometime before the end of December for you to look over. We will have a presentation by Laura Hall regarding the master plan. Uh, we will have a presentation by Laura Hall regarding the master plan. Uh, we will have appointments to the DDA and a Dunkin' Donuts Storm Drain Agreement. So everybody needs a storm drain agreement, especially Dunkin' Donuts. Um, otherwise, I just want to thank everybody for, uh, uh, being here tonight, and, uh, you know, it's, a lot's changed in the last four years. Four years ago, when we had the swearing-in ceremony, this place was packed. Uh, and, and I think even if we didn't have COVID, we'd probably still have some pretty low numbers here tonight. So we're certainly not as exciting as we were four years ago, and I think the voters especially, uh, realize that and, and appreciate it, and that's why we've, uh, we've been returned. I do want to thank again Jerry Vorva for, uh, managing this very complex election. Uh, as many of our neighbors struggled with this election, uh, this was done, I think, darn near flawlessly, uh, and we got early results, and your team, Paula and, and her, her team and all of your poll workers, uh, they, they went through a lot. They were very well organized, they, they, we had, what, an 81% turnout, and, uh, they handled it amazingly on, with, on top of the threat of, the constant threat of COVID that was hanging over all of us. So, uh, again, congratulations to you and your team. Finally, I just want to say Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone in Plymouth Township. It's an honor to serve you, and we, we certainly wish the best for you and your families, and we all hope and pray for a, a better 2021. Clerk Vorva.
Just a quick Merry Christmas to all of the, uh, the members of the board here, all of the employees in the township who've worked very hard over some very trying times, and of course, a very Merry Christmas to all of our residents.
Mark.
I'll just echo those statements. Thank you, Merry Christmas, and, uh, to all the employees, it's been a tough year, a challenging year, and everybody, everybody stood up and did a great job in some very trying times.
Bob.
I don't have anything to add.
John Stewart.
Well, you know, every practicing lawyer likes closing argument. We've had a wonderful, loquacious, uh, meeting here tonight with the, the trustees. I want, specifically though, I do want to thank you Supervisor Heisey and you Clerk Vorva for the continual communication that you have given me. I go into my law office and there's inevitably an email from one of you, and I, I, I really appreciate that because things have greatly changed since I served as a trustee from 88 to 92, and putting a number, a significant number, we, if, if I remember correctly, trustee or Clerk Vorva, we went from 6,000 to 16,000 absentee voters between August and November? Well, hats off to Paula Jefferson, help me with the rest of the names, Denisha.
And Deborah Dooley.
Deborah Dooley. I mean, they worked very, very hard. And then finally, uh, an issue that's per, it's personal to me beyond being technical here tonight, it's the human element. We've had a significant loss of jobs in Michigan. We've had a significant increase in domestic violence. The hidden victims in our society are homelessness and hunger. Since Gleaners opened in 1977, there has never been a greater need for food or help. This is a reflection on the stress and the additional burden on our police and fire. I'm looking forward to the reopening of Friendship Station, working with Bobby Pummel. Our seniors are plagued by two significant things: isolation and loneliness. We don't meet again till the middle of January. Let's see what we can do to help each other.
Trustee Monahan.
You know, I always hate those kinds of closing arguments. They, uh, really have to be outdone from somebody else's words online because I can't, I can't beat that. Thank you for saying those kind of words. Um, I want to say thank you for that because, uh, I wouldn't be here, um, and as enthusiastic about being a trustee than when you first put the idea into my head, and same thing with Mr. Vorva. Thank you so much. It is a privilege, it's an honor. I didn't think that at this stage in my life I would be seeking office, but here I am. And I thank you for all the emails and the, you know, information that you've given us to keep us up to date. I only hope that I can live up to the residents' expectations and yours as well. I thank everyone who voted for me, and those who didn't, I hope to earn your confidence. Um, because we're in it together. I said that at the one meeting that we were able to do on Zoom, I think it ended up on some porn outside unfortunately, but, uh, at the end of the day, we are all in this together. It doesn't matter what economic background you come from. I mean, just talking tonight, three of us came from Downriver. We're, we're all different, uh, uh, nationalities and backgrounds, and we come together as one to serve the people of the township of Plymouth. We moved here 20 years ago, it's our community, and we're so glad to serve it. And thank you again for putting me on, on this wall of call of trustee.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas.
Trustee Kermy.
Hate to be the, I'm still, I still want to do some work, so just a couple of things. Um, with it, when we appoint the DDA people or just people in general, uh, you know, when COVID's off, I'd like them to come here and stand up and, so like we did today, so we know who they are, and so who the people that voted for us who are appointing them know who they are, because they can have a significant effect on someone's life by the decisions they make on these boards.
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, we can, um, not everybody's schedules fit our schedule, so we, we always, I always invite the appointees or prospective appointees to attend, um, but again, sometimes there's conflicts that come up and.
All right, let's do the best we can. Just ask them to swing by if they can't make it when the reappointment at some point.
Yeah.
Just drop by, they don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Um, other item is bookkeeping. Jerry, before you file this board packet, there's people's social security numbers in this packet with their names and birthdays. Take it off, please. Yours is one of them. MTA sign up for the new people. Jerry, there is a note in the MTA magazine of the instructions of what to do to take the old members off and register the two new members for MTA, so they have access to the training and, uh, free password, website use, uh, Michigan Townships Association. And you'll get a password and a user ID, and you can use their database and ask them questions and things like that. It's very useful.
Do you know if the, are they having a, uh, are they planning on having a.
Convention?
Conferences?
I don't think they've made that decision yet because it's usually in April.
And it's, but they were, they went from alternating Detroit and outstate to two years outstate and one year in Detroit, right?
This year was supposed to have been in Traverse City.
Right, this past year.
But it didn't happen.
So this is a conference you guys would want to, you'd, you'd want to attend if possible, there's a lot of good sessions.
Uh, the other item is, uh, I'm going to hand this out to you, it's from MTA, and if COVID continues or that, when we have these rules from the state of Michigan, I urge us to at least have a call-in telephone so that somebody's at home that doesn't want to come in can talk to us by telephone. It's completely secure, all you need is a touchstone phone. Almost everybody in Plymouth Township has a touchstone phone, either landline or, uh, a cellphone.
We did that for a while, you know, we did that. We had a phone, we had a phone here and we did have.
Let me hand this out, the attorney probably will want some of it.
I think it's safe to assume nobody has a rotary phone anymore.
Well, you never know. Pass that down, that, that was from their October magazine, and it goes through other people's experience, and this way you don't have to reinvent the wheel, they've already done the work.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, Merry Christmas.
All righty. Very good, very good. That being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Trustee Stewart, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Monahan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.